Good evening, folks. It's just a couple of minutes after seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order of the Dallas Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, August the thirteenth. It's a little bit after seven P M. And we're here for our monthly planning commission meeting. Agendas, I believe, are available to everybody. I'm calling the meeting to order and I will have take a roll call by name, please.
Commissioner Newell.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Banford. Commissioner Gro.
Here.
Commissioner Swanson.
Here.
Commissioner Koosh and Commissioner Spofford are excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of July the ninth, twenty twenty four. I looked them over. I assume everyone else did. Are there any additions, retractions, or corrections? If not, I would ask for somebody to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
I will second it.
Moved and seconded approval of the minutes, just voice votes say aye.
Aye.
Both the same. Okay, the minutes from July ninth are approved as printed. Thank you, staff. Agenda item number four is public comment. And this is an opportunity for citizens to speak on items that are not on the agenda. And we have had some of those recently. Do we have anybody on the line electronically tonight, Benjamin?
We do not, just for Andrew.
I'll check again later. So anyone that might be present that would like to speak on anything that's not on our agenda as as printed. This is your opportunity to get up and address the planning commission. Do we have anybody out there that'd like to do that? Okay, so it doesn't look like that's gonna. We have no public comment. Agenda number five is our public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one is subdivision number twenty three dash oh two. Crystal Estates, the Gen Ray Properties LLC. It's a twenty five lot subdivision. Located in the three hundred block of Academy Street. So I will go through, and this is this is the one before I open the hearing commissioners, this is the one that has been continued a couple of times. While the city and the applicant worked out the.
Some issues.
So work. Well, I was gonna say we're yeah, issues.
Yeah.
Worked out some of the finer points of of the deal so that we could make a good solid decision with all the information and not go. Through a a long drawn out process, and I appreciate all the work that's been done. By city staff, by the applicant, and by their representatives to to make this work out. So. This is a type three public hearing. So the public hearing is regarding property located in three hundred block of Academy Street. It does not have a street address. It's. Five point. Some acres of land. We'll get into that. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission, and I now declare the public hearing open at seven oh five P M. As this application is subject to land use proceeding recognized by state law, I'm required to read the following statement. The failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the planning commission and the parties an adequate opportunity. To respond to each issue precludes appeal to the state land use board of appeals based upon that issue. So please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria listed in the staff report. Or to the criteria in the Dallas Development Code you believe applies to the decision. The applicable approval criteria are found in code chapters. Chase, I don't have it. At hand, you help me out. Here we go.
Yeah, so. Microphone. So approval criteria again, chapter four point three land divisions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. At this time, I will ask if any of the planning commission has a conflict of interest, a site visit, or an ex parte contact to declare. Anyone? I'm not seeing any. I will declare, although it's not a conflict of interest, that I do live in the vicinity. Of this property, but I am outside of the notification zone. But I live on Oak Street that's in the vicinity of this, but it will not prevent me from making a good decision based on city. So this hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin to the staff report followed by questions of. Questions from the planning commission of the staff. Thereafter, we'll hear from the applicant, including any members of the applicant team for a total of fifteen minutes. And this may be followed by questions from the planning commission and commissioners remind me. That we have an opportunity to ask questions sometimes. Sometimes I yeah, everyone's got a copy now. Everyone get we get flying through these things sometimes, and I sometimes I I skip over things, so don't hesitate to interrupt me or remind me. Then after we hear from the planning, the applicant, and then commissioner questions thereafter, we'll hear from all other interested. Parties in presenting testimony on this item before the commission. And any person that would like to testify will be provided five minutes to testify. And then we'll provide the applicant with five minutes to rebut any testimony that was received. After we've heard all testimony, I will close the public hearing and ask the planning commission to deliberate. And then ask for a motion in response to the proposal. In this case, the commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. So this time we'll start with the staff report and. Maybe have the staff report, please, and I will ask staff in their staff report, and I'm sure you're prepared to. Give us the background on the continuances that have occurred in this case and. Bring some dates so that we can make a good decision for city of Dallas here this evening. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair Swanson and members of the commission. I am Jim Jacks. I'm a planner at the Mid Bullamont Valley Council of Governments. And among other things, we provide planning services to. Cities in Marion, Polk, and Yamhill counties, which is our service area. And what's now turning out to be a few months ago. The council of governments was asked to fill in for this particular subdivision case, so I was here for the June. Hearing, which really didn't have anything. It was continued. And then in July, the July nine meeting, it was continued again. So we are finally here in August and we have a resolution. So. In terms of a, an initial brief summary. The supplemental staff report that you receive today. The it's dated August thirteen at the top. The properties in the residential medium density zone. Comprehensive plan map designation is residential, and there's also the Rick real creek trail designated. Along the creek that impacts this property. I guess the subject property is five point one two acres. Adjacent land uses are single family to the north across the creek. And to the west industrial to the southeast and south. Not too long ago in twenty twenty one. The this property was part of a partition. And so now it's proposed to be a. What is currently or what has been changed to be a twenty six lot subdivision. It started out as twenty five, but with changes from the two continuances. There is an additional lot that's in the proposed subdivision now. So at the bottom of the supplemental staff report. It has the project review and it's revised because it's a little different now compared to last July. The difference being that. There was a, there is a settlement agreement that's been signed as of today. And the primary issue is that it addresses the. Rick real Rick real creek trail. Easement. And so on the map. Doesn't have a. Color on it. From the east portion of the property extending to the west portion. There's a twenty foot easement. Where the creek trail will be constructed. And then along the west side of lot eighteen, there is a fifteen foot easement. And so the creek trail will. Jog over, so to speak, to this looping street, and then people will be on the street and on over. So. That has been the main sticking point. Other issues such as minimum lot size and so forth are all met. Lot widths are met. There's. Requirements in the code for different sized lots and so forth, and those have been addressed. I get received also today a copy of the settlement agreement. So I'm not going to go into great detail other than. I think pretty much what I've done already to. Show you where the easement is along the creek and where the easement is along the west property line of lot eighteen. I might mention that initially there was a cul-de-sac with some privately owned. Mid block crossings, if you will. And one of the things that occurred at the July nine continuance was after that. The the cul-de-sac was removed and we ended up with this looping street. As part of that and. Looking at the open space numbers and percentage and so forth. That's where the extra lot came in. So the second page of the supplemental report is the recommended action. Which is that the following conditions of approval are basically from the July nine. Staff report. And there are changes. Supplemental to recognize or acknowledge the. Agreement today. So staff recommends the subdivision application be approved with the following conditions of approval. I'm not going to read through each one of those, but in the middle of page two. Condition of approval to see is different. Tonight than on July nine because it acknowledges and recognizes what is in the agreement. There's a couple other conditions of approval that have been changed due to the agreement. Another condition of approval used to refer to a tract H. And that was part of what was submitted after or as part of the July nine. Proposal, but tract H is not here now because it went away as part of the agreement. So at the bottom of page three. The recommended motion is would be I move the approval or I move to approve. The subdivision application consistent with the settlement agreement. With the conditions stated in the supplemental staff report dated August thirteen. And the exhibit A is what is being displayed. Basically, it's a infill subdivision, twenty six lots and seems as though. There are always issues with infill developments, but I think we have a very good solution. And staff recommends wholeheartedly that the commission approve what is proposed tonight.
Thank you very much. I'll just say that I've been following this and been reading your work through the continuances and and I appreciate the work of the cog. And you, sir, for your level of thoroughness and. Due diligence in terms of making sure that we get this just right. So I just want to express my appreciation for that.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Commissioners, are any questions of Mr. Jacks? Regarding the staff before the supplemental staff report and where we are today. John.
If I can ask in. Oh, one point three, we talked about. City of Dallas staffs strongly recommending approval. Does that include the city manager?
Yes. And your city attorney. Yeah.
I believe that they were the ones that negotiated the agreement that got us to the point of got us over a couple of the.
But yeah, that's a good question. Thanks for getting that on the record. Yeah.
And the city manager, the assistant city manager signed the agreement so we can assume we they agree.
All on board.
They're all on board.
Are there any other questions of staff before we move forward to the applicant's presentation? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Jacks, stand by if we have any other questions. I'm sure that we'll we'll. Will appeal to your expertise if necessary. So applicant, come on up and you have to sit in. Recorded. Oh, he is. We haven't plugged in.
Yeah, hopefully. Can you hear me?
You, sir, and also your attorney who's.
Andrew Stamps.
Mr. Stamp, could you go ahead and speak? I'm not sure you're coming through. Okay.
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay.
Thank you.
Speak up. Hear you. Okay, let me turn up the volume here. Maybe that helps. Can you hear me now?
Worse.
Pretty quiet.
Turn it up. We're gonna get feedback.
Yeah. We're doing best we can. Please state your name and your legal address for the record.
Okay, my name is Andrew Stamp. I'm an attorney at Val Fatheringham VF Law. And we're at six thousand Meadow Street, Suite five hundred, Lake Oswego, Oregon nine seven zero three five. How how's my audio now?
It's faint, but if we're all quiet, we can hear you.
Okay, well, I'll be short. So, yeah, it it. I want to thank staff, city manager, and the city attorney, Steve, for working through. This with us. We think we have a fair deal. And with regards to. The trail improvements. In particular, where we we thought it was a very nice gesture of the city to. Agree to let us put our stormwater system. In an alternative location which included a small easement from the city. Which would, you know, help us locate that facility in a place that's not as intrusive. And so that was a huge component for us, and we really appreciate the city working with us on that. There. Basically, what you see now in front of you, the site plan. That is part of the settlement agreement is what's before you tonight. There probably been six or seven iterations of this of the site plan. So we really want to make sure that we have the correct one in front of us. It said it should say exhibit A in it in your packet tonight. And it does show the Rick real creek path in the city's desired location. It shows that easement that I just referenced. And it shows a continuous loop system which was for the road, which was important to the city. So with that. You know, we think we meet all the criteria. And, you know, would request.
Um and you know, would request approval tonight. There is one condition that I. I I understand the city went through and had some revised conditions and I didn't get a chance to look at those. But there was one condition that I was a little confused about. And and so Steve asked me to make sure that I talked about any conditions that um that might be. Need to be modified, but based on the staff report from July, there was a condition two E. That says, as part of submitting detailed construction plans, the applicant must submit a draft final plan and revise narrative document. Explaining how the revised lot and street configuration complies with the Dallas Development Code. It would be right my recommendation that we just modify. The findings for the uh for this case. In a in a matter that takes care of that condition so that we don't have to deal with it later. It's procedurally a little difficult to deal with that condition. As part of construction. Uh so. I think the better approach is to take the staff report and modify it to reflect what's on the. Plan that we have at exhibit A, the current site plan. And that should address all of the issues. That you know, there were some issues mentioned in the staff report about block lengths and things like that that relied on some interpretations. Uh that I think the city is gonna back off from. Uh and and from where they were written in the staff report because there were some of those block length interpretations would have killed the project. So that's obviously not the city's intent. So what I'm hoping to do is just take care of condition two E as part of the findings. Does that make sense, Steve? Does that is Steve there?
No.
We're gonna we're we're gonna ask Lane to.
Oh, Lane is there. Oh, yes, right. He told me that Lane was gonna be there. Does that make sense, Lane?
Hey Andrew, you know, two E now in the revised. Uh staff report that we have before us tonight is i- i- it says that as part of submitting detailed construction plans. The applicant must submit a draft final plan consistent with the settlement agreement and that incorporates. Your exhibit A, so.
Okay, that addresses my concerns.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought that did. So that's 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 that that issue is resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Lane.
Well, unless you want to hear me banter on for anymore, I I. I I will don't have anything further to say. I could answer questions that you might have.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate that. And if any questions come up, stay on the line and we will call on you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Edwardson?
Um just one, it's.
Name and address, please.
Say your name and address. Thank you, sorry.
Chris Edwardson, three six nine Southeast Walnut Court. My conflict of interest is that I own this. And I live across the creek from it and my daughter lives next to it. So I want it to be nice and done right. I wanted to express some, it might surprise you, an appreciation because. Originally, we did not have this loop design and there were reasons why at the time, uh but we had. A change in engineer mid uh mid product due to a retirement and and uh. My engineer is here today and when he did this redesign at your request and I'm actually much happier with it. Because it is better circulation. It was never, you know. There wasn't really like uh it, you know, it's just one of those things. I I think it ended up nicer. So that was one of the good things. And the second thing is that uh. Uh there was definitely a halfway meeting in this and I just want to express appreciation that um, you know, I think we it was. It was equal give and take.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you very much. Do you have anything else to add?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. So do the, do any planning commissioners have any questions to the applicant team? And this would include. The representative that's on the phone and Dr. Edwardson is here right now. Do we have any questions about where we're at? Hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now hear for anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address the Dallas Planning Commission on this item. So. Please raise your hand if you'd like to testify on this uh agenda items before the planning commission tonight. Seeing none and there's no one on the phone that has any testimony, uh we will proceed. This is an opportunity now for the applicant to rebut anything that with with testimony that was uh received and there it was none. So we'll go on to any final comments. From the staff or the city attorney on how this has progressed. And I'll I'll just say. That. It's complicated. These infill projects, uh as was stated earlier, it can be problematic because. Streets weren't planned to go through here and no one imagined back in the day that this would be a residential development. So. I think it's great that uh we were able to come to an agreement to to make this work. I've always kind of wondered why that was a. Donut hole of undeveloped property right there in 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 a prime location. So. Uh do we have any other questions of 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 staff or the city attorney before I close the public hearing? Seeing none? I now declare the public hearing closed at seven twenty six. PM and now this is the time for us to deliberate upon this topic. This, I don't, I'm sure that you folks have read all the the lengthy material that was submitted in the two continuances. So I'm just gonna get my comments off, uh you know. Get them off first and if you have any, uh yeah, you can follow me. As far as the planning commission goes, our job is to administer the code. Uh appropriately and make good decisions that are community driven based on the code. There were objections from the applicant at the onset on the looped street. That was resolved. There were some concerns about the requirement or the necessity of the Rick real creek trail system. Those were resolved. And those were the main things that we consider. The the monetary agreement that has been uh developed between the city of Dallas and the applicant. Uh is really out of our purview. The way I see it.
You're correct.
Yeah, and and so while I'm a little bit uh uh, you know. I I mean, I'm in the deep end of the pool myself on on some of this stuff and uh. It it concerns me. I don't want the planning commission to find itself in a position where we are. Spending public dollars to resolve an agreement between the city and a property owner. But I I've been assured that that uh. That's not what we're here to consider. Uh there were concerns about the street. They've been. There were concerns about the trail. They've been resolved. So from where I stand, I think that this has been. An example of good process and while it's taken a few months. And a bunch of time and a whole lot of work and a big binder that I've read a couple of times, uh. I I I think I think that all all folks involved in this project have done good work. So. I usually go last. I went first. So are there any other comments or oper- you know? Commissioners, what do you think about this?
Uh John has a hint of.
I'm sorry, procedural question?
Sure.
This approval or not specifically on the application for the settlement agreement proposed?
It's gonna be on approval of the subdivision with the conditions attached. One of the conditions being the agreement. The agreement is.
One.
There is one. Yeah, there's one approval.
The application initiated the process. It has evolved as the uh months have gone on and what you have before you now. Is reflected in the settlement agreement and that is and in and in the staff report and and that is what you are approving tonight.
The subdivision plaque, not the agreement.
That's right. Well, yes, but as as laid out in the agreement, it's subject to you. Yeah, that's right.
So good question. Uh I I want to make sure we get this right. My concern was. What author- by what authority does the planning commission have to spend? City dollars and we don't, we don't, but that's not what we're here to consider. Uh uh so. Uh a fair agreement uh has been reached between the applicant and the local jurisdiction, the city of Dallas. To. And the agreement's here for us to read, but we're not in a position. Or placed in the authoritative position to uh uh. Say that we're gonna spend public dollars on this or that. Uh now the situation would be reversed where the applicant might, you know. The city owed the city more money, but that really doesn't come into bearing. We we look at the planning stuff and that is. As far from my point of view, the trail and the street both have been satisfied. In the terms of this agreement, so I think that we're on solid ground and move forward. And I'll also add that this is final approval unless it's appealed. This doesn't go on to city council. This is this is something that we're we're approving. Considering for approval here at the seat. Are there any other deliberations, questions, comments? We like it, we don't like it.
I think you said it well. Thank you.
The recommended motion is at the bottom of page three of the supplemental staff report.
So without further ado and no more deliberation, we're in a position where we would be entertaining a motion.
I moved to approve the subdivision application consistent with the settlement agreement with the conditions stated. Supplemental staff report in August thirteen twenty twenty.
Perfectly stated. Thank you. We have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Grow, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll now vote on the motion. The motion is to. Approve the subdivision with the conditions according to the supplemental staff report, including. The agreement reached between the applicant and the city of Dallas. So we will do a roll call vote on this. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Noel?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Yes.
Commissioner Banford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grow?
Yes.
Commissioner Swanson?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. An order reflecting the planning commission's decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record. Within ten business days. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh like I said. When they get continued like that, sometimes we get a little worried. Are we getting, are we, are we? Getting deeper into the weeds or are we getting out of the weeds? And I think that we we did this the right way and I'm I'm very pleased with the results. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, sir.
Good night.
Zero, uh planning commission and thank you, Lane.
You bet. Thank you.
And thanks to the cog for stepping in and helping us out with with this.
Well, there was a good experience. Everybody here is great to work with and with the applicant and the city being able to work out a good solution. Then it's about as good as it can be.
Everybody wins.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what we're, that's what we try for. Okay, so now we will move on to our. It's a a little after seven thirty. I don't think we need a break. Uh let's just move forward. Uh our second public hearing this evening is zone change. Uh number twenty four dash oh four located at four ninety eight Southeast Hinkle Street. Proposed by the POC Community Development Corporation. It's the rezoning of four ninety eight Southeast Hinkle Street from residential low density. To residential high density and we have seen a few of these. Uh in uh in in the past couple of years. So the public hearing is regarding uh previously stated a zone change on Southeast Hinkle Street. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission and I now declare the public hearing open at. Seven thirty four PM. As this application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law. I'm required to read the following statement. The failure to raise an issue of sufficient detail to afford the planning commission and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Recludes appeal to the state landlord. You uh state land use board of appeals based upon that issue. So please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria you believe applies to the decision. Applicable criteria are found uh. In the staff report and at this time I will ask if there are any planning commission members that have a conflict of interest. A site visit or an ex parte contact to declare in this consideration. Looking around and seeing none, the hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with the staff report followed by questions of the of the staff by planning commissioners. Thereafter, we'll hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of fifteen minutes. This may be followed by questions from the planning commission. Thereafter, we'll hear from all other interested parties present in testimony on the items before the commission. Each person will re-provide in five minutes testify. We'll then provide the applicant with five minutes to rebut any testimony that was received. After we've heard all testimony, I'll close the hearing and ask the planning commission deliberate. And then ask if there is a motion for recommendation in response to this proposal. I'll remind the commissioners that this is a type four legislative public hearing, which means we are not. Approving the zone change. We are recommending the zone change. To the city council that will conduct a public hearing on the same matter. Uh at some future date. So this is not a final approval. This is a recommendation to city council. Who will then consider final approval of the zone change. So slight difference there. And I don't know if. If you guys have the script on that one as well. You got you got Bozo. Okay, good, good. That was a good addition. I'm glad I thought of that. That's what I was looking for. Thank you, Joe. So we'll move forward. Let's uh let's start off with the staff report.
Yes, uh so um as mentioned, the request is a rezoning uh slightly under an acre. From uh low density to high density residential. Um there's five approval criteria for uh zone changes. Uh the request has to be consistent with the statewide planning goals, has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan for the city of Dallas. Uh public facilities have to have adequate capacity to support development of the site at the requested zoning intensity. Uh their change has to be in the public interest and the request has to conform to the transportation planning rule. Uh under state law. So um the project site is at four ninety eight Southeast Hinkle Street. That's uh in the the northeast. Area of the city, although it is in the southeast quadrant. Um zoning uh vicinity here, we can see it's surrounded by a combination of single family homes. Uh manufactured uh uh home trailer park uh. Uh apartment complexes and then down the street, there's uh Gala Park. So um kind of a a good mix of uses going on in the immediate vicinity. Um immediately adjacent is the property that uh POC CDC brought to us last year for rezoning. And so we can see that on the zoning map. Uh it's the long property. Um that goes down to Hinkle Street that was rezoned last year. Um and so this uh application concerns the adjacent property shown with the star there at the corner of Schmidt and Hinkle. Um and so the request is to rezone that to RH um to match the surrounding property there. So um, yeah. Uh staff recommendation is that uh that. Planning commission uh recommended the city council that this uh be be approved. Um it appears to have met all of the relevant uh approval criteria. Um I have seen a draft development concept uh for the site. Um although obviously we're not reviewing the development application itself today, just the rezoning. Um it does appear that they are working on uh solidifying plans for development of the site uh consistent with the. Uh development corporation's uh mission of affordable housing. Um as far as uh testimony, I will also point out that we did receive a letter from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. Um that just came in uh quite recently and so was not uh included in the packet as a result. Um although it's dated on the sixth, I don't believe we actually got it until like yesterday, but um. So we have that uh uh in front of you um expressing their uh their support. Um I'm not seeing the applicant present and so I'm a little bit perplexed by that. Um since she was in my office just last week and we talked about this uh project specifically, so. There you go. Um but I'm assuming that uh something came up and. Um hopefully you won't hold that against them in your decision making. Um, hopefully you won't hold that against them in your decision making. Um, any questions you may have uh for staff, certainly happy to uh answer to the best of my ability. Um, so uh, yeah.
Thank you, Chase. Uh, uh, we'll get to the applicant's uh. Attendance in a moment. Um, so we just. Why are we doing more of these combined rather than? Property by property. I mean, we rezoned the one next door and now we're doing this one. It's kind of a rhetorical question, but. It's nice to see these things done in chunks.
They didn't own the other piece either then, did they?
Um, they, they did not own the other piece uh last year when they, they brought the adjacent property to us. Uh, the. Planning uh official does have the ability to expand rezoning requests for the orderly expansion of the city. Yeah, yeah, that's what it was. Annexation requests. We hadn't yet amended the code to include that authority for rezonings. Only for annexations because we had been wanting to include this property last year and then found that. We actually lacked, that I specifically as an individual lacked the authority to do that. Now, obviously, city council, they can designate zoning for whatever property they want. That's, that's their authority, but. Yeah, so that's why that was removed from last year's application and. In the time since, it seems like they have come to a negotiated arrangement to purchase uh this property. Um, I believe it was contingent upon their ability to rezone and develop it uh consistent again with their admission for affordable housing. So um, yeah.
And I recall that. That's kind of why I asked. Like all the other R L properties in the vicinity there are probably single family homes and.
Uh, there's a.
Them would be, you know. Inapplicable.
Right, there's a, a, a mix of single family and, and duplexes kind of uh in that area. And then there are in the R M zone uh some apartments um as well, but uh. Yeah, for the, for the immediate surroundings, I, I don't imagine there's going to be much more in the way of redevelopment potential in the. Immediate future. Yeah.
And I understand, I'm, I'm gonna. I understand that we're not uh, we're discussing a rezoning and not a development application, but. Based on the, the, the written testimony that we received, this is in an effort to address affordable housing and. Higher density.
Yes.
Residential opportunities in Dallas.
Yes, cuz uh Polk CDC um they, they really focus on affordable housing. And um, the one of the ways obviously that you make housing more affordable is by putting more housing onto a given unit of land. Um, so bring down your land cost. So.
Certainly. Commissioners, any questions uh from staff on their staff report? Seeing none, we would now hear from the applicant. I assume it's Rita, right?
It is Rita Grady, yes.
So I'm sure someone came up. Rita is a. Trusting community partner in all of these endeavors and I'm sure that she will be. Uh, uh, present at when the city council. Uh, that considers this for final approval should we pass that recommendation on. So there is no testimony from the applicant. It seems pretty straightforward. We uh did an identical. Resoning of the property right next door a few months ago. So uh. If we had any questions to the applicant, what might they be? I can't think of it.
Seems fairly straightforward.
Seems straightforward. So you see the heartburns. I'm trying to make it harder than it is maybe.
We could actually get out of here before he.
Okay, so we'll now hear from anybody in attendance who would like to address the planning commission on this item. Please raise your hand. Uh, if you'd like to testify, the two in the back.
Tom, Troy.
You're not permitted. Troy sees his thirty minutes to you. No, 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 this is good. So uh, so we, we have no testimony. Uh, we're all eh eh. We're all aware of what we're trying to accomplish here. So. Uh, does the planning commission have any questions or are there any comments from staff or the city attorney before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on. I'm going to clear the public hearing closed at seven forty-five P M. So now we'll deliberate on this topic and if there isn't any deliberation, uh we will entertain. Uh, a motion. For recommendation to the city council to consider for final approval this rezoning request from Polk Community Development Corporation. Deliberation. My favorite French word. Seeing none, uh let's move on. Would anyone like to uh, to raise a motion?
The motion is on what would be the bottom of page five, but there's no page numbers on the uh staff report.
I'll move to recommend that the city council approve the zoning map amendment asked proposed.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, let's just do a voice vote. All those in favor uh respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The motion passes unanimously. The commission's recommendation tonight will be forwarded to the city council for their consideration. At an upcoming meeting. Notice of the public hearing before the city council will be sent to all participants of record. And all of the surrounding property owners and the applicant. And please give Rita our best regards and we missed her very much this evening. I saw her at uh, at the parade the other day, uh last weekend or whenever. Okay, so that's where we're at. Uh, we're now at agenda item number six, commissioner comments. Uh. Planning commissioners, is there anything you'd like to put before uh? Put before us this evening before we conclude our meeting, I will say that I have not forgotten that we were going, that. I had taken on the task of engaging the city manager to do a little more collaboration. Between the planning commission and city council. Uh. Haven't done much work on that, but there was a general agreement that we'd get to that sort of when. Summertime is over to get back into the fall and people aren't on vacation and things like that. So I haven't forgotten about that. But is there any other planning commissioner comments? Uh, concerns that you'd like to bring forward before we conclude our meetings here?
What became of the whole shift to Thursday? Conversation, email conversation.
That's a good question. My understanding that it was going to occur. When it was decided it's appropriate we would do that. So do we have anything on that yet?
I do believe there's an agenda item for staff comments.
Well, okay.
But I could answer that now if you'd like.
Question, not a comment.
I can, I can answer that.
I think I would like to hear. All right, so thank you. Is there anything else besides that? And that is a good question.
I, I just wanted to say that I appreciated how the city worked with the crystal, whatever they're called. Crystal states. You know, I thought that was great.
That could have gone a lot differently. And it all could have been, yeah, marathon meetings.
Could have been here for hours.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And it was nice.
I, I, I appreciate. Or yeah, who, who, who knows what? Yeah, yeah. Thank you for saying that, 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 that was not. Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to staff comments. Staff.
Okay.
Know what we want to hear comments on.
Oh, I'm surprised they want, never mind.
Well, uh, if you want to know my favorite ice cream flavor, I'm certainly happy to tell you. Um, so yes, as far as uh the reschedule to Thursdays, um that will be effective beginning next month. Um, and so we have sent out a thirty-five day notice to D L C D for next month's hearing. Um, with that new uh Thursday uh time. So uh, that is currently what we've got scheduled. It's at the seven o'clock time slot on Thursday. I know there was also some discussion of moving the meetings up to six o'clock in the future. Um, so I wasn't sure if planning commission had come to a consensus on six versus seven. Um, so next month will be seven o'clock. After that, if we want to move when we get to six, we can certainly do that. Um, just let me know which of the two time slots works best for you on those Thursdays.
Which is Tuesday.
Yeah, I think that didn't get correctly changed on the agenda. Yes, it will be the twelfth. Yes.
But still at seven o'clock.
Yes, still at seven o'clock.
The option exists for six thirty. I mean.
I like, I like six.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with six.
Okay, I can always amend the notice that went to D L C D. I don't think they will complain if we move it forward an hour. They got thirty-five days notice, like an hour is not going to make a difference.
So, don't believe. You know, where we are in this day and age with the ability to participate electronically if necessary. Uh, I don't think it's a hardship to move it up to six.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it's not a requirement. It was always a courtesy. To the public to, to have it later in the evening, but I, times have changed enough. So I am of. The opinion that six o'clock would be a, a much more appropriate start time and I totally understand. You know, the. The minutia behind the reason to change it from a Tuesday to a Thursday, so. Just keep us in the loop so that we know because I'm sure that we'll all forget a couple of times. Or it's all, you know, we're settled into the new time slot. It's been time immemorial. We, we, you know, it's for a very long time. We've done this at the same time, the same day, the same hour. Uh. So, thank you. Thank you for that. So starting next month, Thursday, seven o'clock for at least one time.
Yes. Um, other staff comments, um, we have officially had the kickoff for the. Um, update of the transportation system plan, so that will be coming along in the uh. The foreseeable future, we'll start having some community meetings around that. So um. The timeline on that project uh stretches all the way into twenty twenty-six. So it's not going to be a swift uh process. Uh, you know, working with ODA is never particularly fast, so. Um, it is what it is, but um we have officially kicked that off, the T S P update. Um. And then uh, just as a sort of, I guess, personal comment, I, I really did appreciate the, the work that Jim Jacks did. Um, obviously, he's not here to hear me say this. Um, but uh him and his team did a really good job putting together the, the staff reports uh on that application. For the, the Crystal Estates. And so I really enjoyed uh reading that. Um, and so. Um, I thought that was a, a very high bar of uh quality that we got out of them and so. Um, while I will do my best uh to provide you with uh the best staff reports that I can, um. Matching that quality would be a, a, a challenge. So I, I, I really appreciated seeing. Um, a more experienced professional at work, I guess I should say, but.
Years of knowledge.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, I'm a professional planner myself. I, I'm not that one. Yeah, I, I mean, this, I was impressed. I was impressed. And to do it again and again and again as a guy.
Yes.
Good guy though, and, and, and excellent work. So yeah, pass on again our, our uh thanks to, to, to cog. And to him for, for fine, fine work for Dallas here, so. Okay, so that brings us.
One more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Backing up just a little bit to your, your first comments about uh working with the city manager and. I, I don't know what contract, construct you have in mind there. It's kind of a nebulous, something that we'll get to someday. And in that, I've had one specific request. For a very specific action that I would like this city to take, starting here. And it gets kicked down the street, kicked down the street, kicked down the street, and it's just. I don't know how many times I have to ask for us to table one specific issue. That I'm asking for us to take a look at. It just never happens.
Right.
When will it happen? Wh- why won't it happen? Isn't there, aren't we a team?
I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent and like I said, I, I. All I can do is reach out to the city manager, who's our CEO of this organization. And I want to see better connectivity between this body and the city council and the city administration.
That, that's an issue this large?
Yeah.
I'm addressing an issue this large.
Right.
That I've already talked to the city manager about. I've already been through the whole deal, right? So we just need to do something.
Right.
That starts here. It says an agenda item in this group where we're going to talk about something other than administrative.
And we could cer- and we could certainly schedule that. I know one of the reasons that we were putting that off was because we were expecting the Jen Ray. Uh, Crystal Estates uh subdivision application to be quite lengthy in its hearing. Um, and then the city manager was able to put together the settlement agreement and so. We're not going to be here until uh ten thirty at night like I was fearing that this was going to be.
Expedition.
Yeah. But certainly, um, we, we could uh schedule that for one of the upcoming meetings. Um, I don't have very much on the agenda for. Uh, September at the moment. Um, assuming that all goes well, the one thing that I do have shouldn't. Take more than about a half hour, so um if we wanted to include that uh for September, we could.
Okay.
City manager's availability. We want him here to have that discussion.
Let me just take one more minute if I can. Help me understand. Organizationally, why the city manager's the CEO of this group? I've never heard that before.
He's the, he's our lead professional uh administrator of all of city business.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, and, and that puts him in a position of uh administrative authority over. This organization, our organization's planning commission, the city council, the urban renewal agency. All the various committees and, and groups, uh, you know, he's. That's why he's the CEO. He, he's our administrator.
Functionally, the city is a municipal corporation. Um, and so he is the, the lead administrator of the corporation.
Can he determine what's on the agenda here and not? Or how this commission votes on anything?
I.
Well, uh, let me, let me take a crack at it and then you try. It's like, when, when someone applies for a land use application, we're bound by. Deadlines and, and state statutes, meaning we can't. If, if there's an application that's submitted for land use that, that we might not like or agree with, we can't just kick it down the road. There, people are owed, when you submit a complete application, you're owed a hearing within a certain. Number of days or it's automatically approved. So the, those uh, the city manager can control, but uh code changes, uh amendments. To the way we go to governance, to uh, the way we organize ourselves, those are. At his discretion. And uh, the, which gives him a lot of authority and a lot of power over the way the city operates. The flip side of that is he's an at-will employee and he could, you know, lose the uh confidence of the city council. At any meeting and be out of a job. So it. It, it's a stream that flows both ways. Uh, so. The trick for us, and i- if things are slow and we've got like a light agenda in September now is that. Unappropriate time for staff. I'm asking staff and myself. To apply a little bit of, of uh, uh, pressure in that regard and be like, hey, listen, you know, this is important to us. We don't want to feel like we're sitting here on an island, uh, you know, making decisions that we don't. Might not all of us fully understand. Uh, I want to see more connectivity. And, and I know that I'm thinking big picture and you're thinking something a little more specifically, but uh. We need to engage. I'm trying to be as polite as possible. I think that we need to, to uh, uh engage the administrative arm of the city. Uh, uh, more directly. I, I, I'm glad that staff is here. You guys are required to be here and that's great. Uh, but it ain't like it used to be where the, uh, I would like to see the city manager at more of these. More of these meetings and, and more participation, but that's. But that's the way it works. So.
Well, that's an important understanding I never had, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, and I hope I got it right. Yeah. All right. Right. Hey, John, I appreciate it.
Just to clarify, the city manager administers all the codes and laws and regulations. He can't do something contrary to them, I don't believe.
Right.
He's an administrator. Um, so he administers the code just like we do. But he's kind of concentrated power in one place to make sure that that gets done. And he also is in charge of making sure that those decisions that we in the city council do proceed and get done according to the decisions we make and the code that's there. So he's at both hands, but he, he's not a dictator.
All right. Are we good? Anything else we want to discuss this evening? Then I declare the planning commission adjourned. We'll see you.